Okay, 7:04, I'm gonna call to order this meeting of the Board of Selectmen, January 19th, 2016. First order of business is actually review and approval of minutes, which are on none. Confirmation of future meeting dates. We have January 26th, February 2nd, February 23rd, and the Board will meet on February 8th prior to the special town meeting. Is it okay with everybody?
Work great.
Okay. Item four on the agenda is approval of payroll and vendor warrants.
I'll make a motion to approve the current payroll and vendor warrants.
Second.
Motion made, second. Any further discussion? Seeing now all in favor.
Aye.
Aye.
Item five is citizens' speak. Any citizens like to address the Board?
Yes, ma'am.
I think we have a sign-in sheet, too. If you'd just...
Right down, Miss Dan. You can sit right down. I can sit?
Yes.
Okay.
Absolutely.
Thanks. So, my name is Sarah Mabel Skellin. I'm a resident of Central Ave, and I am on the Board of a newly-founded nonprofit in town called Milton Playground Planners. We are a grassroots group created out of a broad-based feeling among parents in town that this family-oriented town that we love was not fully serving our young families. For kids too young, for school particularly, under age five, the playground, the park, is where they do all their learning outside of their time at home with their parents. Mastery of their bodies, social interaction with their peers, learning risk versus rewards, it goes on and on. In addition to that, it's where parents can connect, it's where neighbors can meet, it's where community bonds are strengthened. The playgrounds currently, I'm speaking of the four town-owned playgrounds, which are Mary C. Lane, at Kelly Field, Shields Park, and Andrews, are in somewhat sorry shape. They're some 20 to 25 years old and in various states of disrepair. So, we recognize that the town, I think, values this demographic, obviously, but that resources are limited, as always, in all cases. So, this group was formed with the primary objective of bringing the playgrounds, not just up to current standards, but to innovative, forward-thinking standards that will serve the families in this town for years to come. So, our goal is to raise approximately $750,000 over the course of 2016. Our ambitious goal, I should say, to ideally begin renovations of the playgrounds in 2017. I'll sit with that for a second. We've been working with Parks Department, the Board of Commissioners in that regard, and various other town departments and residents to figure out the best way to approach this. And we've contacted several equipment vendors and have gotten design renderings and budgets from them. We feel that the number we've come up with is a more than sufficient number that will hopefully also allow us to gift a maintenance fund to the town so that what's happened currently does not continue to happen, and that they can be well-cared-for and updated as needed. We really want to just make sure that we can not only modernize what's there, but enhance the physical and educational facilities of each playground to serve, to be accessible and inclusive to kids and families of all abilities. So, we are having a kickoff event next Tuesday, January 26th, from 7:00 to 10:00, at Steel and Rye. And it's gonna be a fairly small and exclusive event where we will share some kind of ground-level plans, the preliminary design renderings from these three contractors, and start to give other town members, residents, a feeling of what our plans are and what our goals are. So, I just wanted to share that with everyone, and you can find out more and purchase tickets at our website, which is MiltonPlaygroundPlanners.com. And we welcome all help and support from everyone in town of any kind. We need all the help that we can get.
We normally don't converse back and forth during these, but, I mean, this is such a, you know, a generous gift, if you can pull it off, that I think it requires some response. Yeah, it's, I think it's a fantastic idea. You know, what I'd love to see you do, just have a forum, is if you want to bring it on the, actually on our agenda at some point in time, so you can just show us renditions, it'll get on TV, and maybe get a crowd to actually see it. The other thing I can tell you is the Capitol Committee is recommending, what was it, 125?
125,000. I did hear that. I would love to know more about that.
So, that could be a local, you know, that could be a local match, potentially, you know?
Can you repeat what you just said? That could be local match?
A local, you know, the town's match for whatever you raise.
Okay.
Because 125 isn't gonna go very far, although if, otherwise, all it really does is just fix a little bit of that equipment that's there.
Right, exactly.
So, you know, much rather see beautiful mill equipment out there.
It'd be combined, too.
Yeah.
Great. That's wonderful. That's what was our hope as well.
Great.
Thank you.
Sarah, why don't you give your email address or your website again, so that people who are watching can get it right down?
Sure. Yes, people who are watching. The website is MiltonPlaygroundPlanners.com. Our email is MiltonPlaygrounds@gmail.com. The event is next Tuesday, January 26th, 7:00 to 10:00, at Steel and Rye.
Normally, I don't pass up an opportunity to go to Steel and Rye, but we're gonna be here next Tuesday.
We'll have a...
I know. We'll have to plan the next one for an evening other than Tuesday.
But we can donate, right?
Yes, we can.
We can do donations.
Sarah, I've been in touch with Kelly from The Clerk.
Yes.
And it sounds very exciting, and we normally, as Tom said, don't typically speak during this time, but I think it's such great news that you guys have stepped up and to show that, you know, the community really wants to work together along with the town, and I think that that's a nice partnership.
Thank you.
So, thanks.
Great, thank you. Good, glad to hear it. Okay.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Anybody else like to address the Board? Nobody? Okay. Item six on the agenda is conference on the Consolidated Facilities Department Quarterly Report. And we have Bill Ritchie, there he is. Hi, Bill.
How are you, Bill?
Good evening, Bill.
I think I gave you, I'm gonna give you an updated sheet. There's a couple, you know, I tried to get that out really quick on Thursday, because I know we had a couple meetings, but we kinda canceled from, you know, different ways, so...
Thank you.
We kinda haven't, you know, we haven't met for a while, but I, so I kinda just kinda put down a whole bunch of different things, you know. Not sure if you want to kinda go through either item, or you want to talk about any specifics, because you know, a lot of different things that are happening with solar panels and, you know, all the work orders, the capital projects that we've done, so I don't know, you know. I can talk a lot, and I don't know if I want to do that.
Maybe you wanted to talk about some of the capital projects that are ongoing right now, and you should...
Yeah, so at the middle one, capital projects upgraded for 16, 251,000. So, we received $145,000 from the Capitol Committee, and we do some billing improvements for the fire department. We pretty much looked at all the safety items, which includes the boilers, updating the fire alarm systems, and repaired the water and oil separators. So, we had 145,000, we're about 95% completed. So, what we did, we put all new boilers in all three fire stations. The problem we're finding out in code days like today is the piping systems are too old. So, we put like a new hot in an old system. So, you know, all the, you know, so we, we spent a few weeks, but we had the plumbers down there. But that's one of the issues with some of these old buildings. You try to update the system because they don't work, but then you, you know, it's a cause and effect, you know, it's like the pipes are too old to really handle the new system. But, you know, the good thing is that we have a brand-new boiler, now we're just trying to try to patch, you know, patch back the systems. And the things we need to update, to finish the project, is new doors and multi, you know, for fire egress. So, hoping to have that done maybe before the spring. And that would, you know, use up to 145,000 fairly quick. You know, it's a good chunk of money to do some things that we haven't done in a while, but it's really, it's just a little Band-Aid approach to like buildings that are worth a lot more, you know, they're kinda really old, and, you know, 100, 100 years old, so it's pretty tough trying to pick, you know, specific projects.
I have a question on that. Tom, this might be more for you on the Capitol Committee than for Bill, but these, I'm sure, are very necessary repairs. Remember, we talked last year about trying to do some repairs to the living quarters in the fire stations, temporary repairs? Obviously, we've got the fire project, the fire station project out there for some future point, but there was talk about trying to do some repairs to the...
Yeah, I don't know that we can fund it.
The living facilities. That's what I'm wondering. Is it in a future? Is it in this year's capital budget or future year's capital budget?
No. I think, I think what we did with working with AM, we had a, we first, we put on a budget of about 450,000, and we looked at all the, all the different items.
And just did the necessary ones.
At least, you know, because it was too expensive, let's look at all the critical, that's why we identified all the critical areas.
So, yeah, it hasn't come forward into another request at this point. You know, it's, the living conditions are obviously not great. That's been, that's been generous.
There's nothing in this year's capital budget that would be for the fire stations?
No, no. There was no request.
Yeah, and I think there was nothing with the request, and I'm not speak for the chief, but I think what happened is that because he's doing a study right now with the architects, they're designing, they're looking at all the different buildings and all the critical components, so we should have a nice report by the summer of really where we need to spend the money, if we have to wait 10 years.
Oh, okay.
You know, because we have a lot, there's a lot of, you know, there's a lot of issues, a lot of environmental issues, there's some asbestos in the building, so they want to look at all the critical components, looking at the wiring, the mechanical.
So, after the next year, you guys will have an assessment made on, you know, a needs assessment on what's gonna have to be done, at least until a project can become...
Yeah, I mean, you know, so I consult with that committee, I'm not on that committee, but I, I've been, you know, involved in a lot of the meetings.
But I think there was a list of...
There was, the bigger list did have a bunch of stuff on it, you know, they got peered down.
So, I think there's an existing one.
Yeah, that was my list.
Yeah.
Well, I wonder whether the Capitol Committee shouldn't revisit that, if the...
We can. I mean, we'd have to do it next year at this point, but because our, I mean, it's already out there, but, but yeah, I mean, if that coincides with when that report's coming out, I guess we can do it, you know, do it in conjunction with that. I do agree with you, the living conditions are bad.
Yeah.
But, yeah, I mean, that's, the problem we came up with is, you know, there were so many important things, and only so much you can fund, that we just kinda limited it to the absolutely necessary repairs to the fire station. And actually, what it did finally come down to, that 145,000 was repurposed money, so we didn't have to borrow any new money to do it.
You know, I don't think any of it was gonna be borrowed. I think it was all, the intent last year was to take it...
Well, it would've come out of...
Funding out of one-time money.
Yeah. I think so, yeah. I don't, I think it was out of one-time money.
Repurposed some of the money's not spent, and we used it for that.
Yes.
But originally, you're correct, we were gonna take it out of one-time funds.
So, that's pretty much with the fire station, that's how we spent that money. And then we had some, you know, two schools, we had security upgrades, and that project is completed, and we did an energy management system for the Pierce Middle School, and that's about 95% complete. We're doing testing of that equipment right now. That runs the whole, you know, that runs the whole power plant at that building. Even myself, I get stunned, and I've been in this business for 35 years, and I say to myself, a piece of equipment's only 10 years old, it's, but it's amazing how fast that, you know, the IT stuff is just, does the last, you know, you know, 10 years, I guess I say, they say, "Bill, 10 years is a long time." That's, you know, IT, it changes quickly. Yeah, quickly, the big thing, the staffing update, we did move two employees from the scooter problem into Consolidated Facilities, that, that's worked out well. The big thing this year, we'll have to work with the town on trying to put them into some union, because their union, their union contract expires July 1st.
Yes, yeah.
So, that's gonna be, so I think, I think they're kinda working themselves, trying to, trying to find a placeholder where it would be, whether it's in the management union or the DPW, so, but they really have to bring...
Because right now, they're in the school.
Yeah. They have to bring something to us before we can kinda negotiate, I guess. Then I did, I did go to the Personnel Board, you know, looking as to trying to build a department when we're looking at the five-year plan, and I did put in two, two new positions. One was like a W-3 to support everyone who's licensed to kinda work with them for safety. I just, you know, you, when you have your licensed electricians working up on the roof by themselves, we should be a second person at all times with them when they're dealing with power. And, you know, and the Personnel Board was great enough to say, they recommended the W-3, but not the licensed craftsmen. I think somewhere down the lines, we build a department and we find a new home. I really, we really need a lot more skill in the department, and a licensed craftsman that can do special projects and building projects. I think it's so critical. I pull all the permits for the apartment myself, which, I mean, it's kinda hard being in the office and pulling the permit, and, you know, guys working off my license, I just, it's a little, it's kinda hairy, I mean, when I can't be there. But I think we need somebody with that expertise that can kinda be out in the field...
Right.
As a working foreman to work with the people.
I have something on that point. So, Bill, could you talk a little bit about how the meeting before the Personnel Board went on that topic? Because this is, this is an area where, you know, clearly, we think this is a priority. The department head thinks it's a priority, and the Personnel Board rejects the position. It's not a question of funding, I mean, that's a separate question for down the road. If we don't have the money to fund it, we don't have the money to fund it. But this is about creating this position within the department that we all agree is a needed position, and the Personnel Board for, I'd like to understand what their reasoning was. Bill, I was surprised to see this in your report.
Yeah.
So, what, can you tell us about that meeting and what the discussion was, what the reasons were?
I think the meeting went really well, and, you know, and I wish, I wish Mike was here, but Mike was, Mike was, you know, Blanchard was here, but he, he's moved on. I explained what I was trying to accomplish in the goal. I think the Personnel Board says, you know, Consolidated Facilities has gone 75% forward. There's still that 25% that's out there, and we'll say it, it's the park department and the cemetery, is that there's more staff out there, you know, eventually, they would like to see if we can continue to kinda merge, and is there an expertise that we already have in town versus hiring another, another position paying benefits? And I said, "Yeah, that's in the possibility," and that's, you know, so we, so maybe as, as the department grows and people feel not as threatened, that, you know, nobody's gonna lose their job while trying to merge together as, you know, as one town and try to utilize all the staff that we have, there could be a carpenter down at DPW Yard or in the cemetery that could fill this role. But do we want to go out and spend $80,000 plus put them on the books with benefits? They're a very expensive position, so...
But that goes to the funding point. That, so it's possible that if there's someone in the DPW who's got that experience, that they might be an internal candidate for a transfer to the position.
Right, yeah.
I think what we're talking about here is creating the position, and this really...
Does a position on merit, yeah.
Right. This really goes to the issue that we've raised before with the Town Government Study Committee and elsewhere, that when we have, we have a town administrator that's acquiring stronger powers and stronger duties and responsibilities, and we have an HR director who went in and advocated for this position with the department head, and it seems to, it sounds from what I'm hearing, that the discussion at the Personnel Board was, "Well, maybe there's somebody in another department who's got the skill that we can move over," and it sounds like they were looking at funding, which really isn't their role. That's the warrant committee, and that's the strong town administrator. So, I think this is just another, I, number one, I'd like us to go in and revisit this with the Personnel Board.
I agree, and I think that that only takes away someone, say, from DPW and puts them into your department.
Still gotta replace the person.
You still have to replace that person. And, you know, you're looking for a specific skill, and at the highest level, and, you know, to benefit, and you've said to us before many times that in Consolidated Facilities, you've been able to be more efficient by having people who are skilled. So, you're getting more of a bang for your buck in our, in our budget. So, I think that, I'd like to see that revisited as well.
Yeah, and it's a combination of efficient and the difference between prevailing wage and...
Correct.
And our salary structure.
Consolidated Facilities as a department, that's a great success story. And we want to keep it moving forward. I think that was the goal of everyone who wanted to put the Consolidated Facilities Department together in the first place, and certainly for us as well. So, it, it just goes to the issue of the role of the Personnel Board going forward. And I think, I'd like to see us, what would be the procedure, Anne Marie, for going back in and getting this into the Personnel Board again?
I am handling the planning board, that Personnel Board duties until we fill the position, and they have a meeting on February 13th, I think, is their, February 10th is their next meeting.
And I know, unfortunately...
So, we could put it on that agenda.
You were not at that, the Assistant Town Administrator was.
I was not, that's correct.
The Town Administrator wasn't, so I think, maybe it would make sense.
At least you get the classification there, you know, even if you don't fill it, but...
I think, again, the Personnel Board, as Bill had articulated, is, is really wanting the town to look at the bigger global picture of where the town is headed, while they agreed that Consolidated Facilities is a great department and is a success story, they do think that there's a need to do some consolidation with, with positions in the town, and that's where they got hung up on this position.
And I think we're all in full agreement with them on that. That's, I mean, we've actually been pushing for a long time.
Exactly.
But this could actually help facilitate consolidation by, if there's a good candidate there, moving that person over from one department to another, but I think it should be in a, there should be a carpenter position in the Consolidated Facilities Department, and I'd like to see us revisit that with the Personnel Board and go in and, you know, have a discussion with them.
Yes, we can put it back on.
And the position is on our, is in my five-year plan also. So, it is on, you know, it is there, depending on funding, you mean, so. And I think it's another reason, they say, "We have it on your five-year plan," so hopefully, eventually, if, you know, if funding does come available, it would be nice, but, but, you know, we, you know, even myself, I totally agree that, you know, we all went forward to consolidate. I think there's more consolidation to go forward. You know, it's, you know...
Thanks, Bill.
Yeah, thanks. So, that kinda revisited the department, and then, you know, all, you know, I listed all the one-time money, I did get some money from the Warren Committee last year, how we spent it, and, you know, where the money, this is just a snapshot of where that money goes. The two bigger things are, we, and we, for last year, we did negotiate two contracts, we, a national gas contract and a electricity contract for both schools and towns, so that goes out every, every few years.
Where does the school stand with its, its solar project?
Yeah, so, yep, that'll be the next item, that'll be the solar project. We have, so we have three solar projects pending right now. We have one in this roof, which we just get the permit, so we, the, I believe the billing department has all the engineering drawings, so hopefully, they're staying sometime in January. I don't know if it's not the best time to put it, but, you know, who knows? I mean, it's, it's, you know, so far, it's been a mild winter, but soon as the building get to, billing permit get to prove, we should be, start that project. And we'll, so that's actually a little bigger than we had, so we, we're hoping that with, after 30 years, and we're gonna try to apply for the solar, new energy credits, the payback on this project should be about $350,000 after 30 years, so it's a pretty good investment. Then we have one at Glover that we're waiting for that had some, had some damage, that's, you know, we're trying to get that permit. And the town, we tried, like, I was involved in this four years ago, we tried to do a five-meg net meeting project. They broke it down to four megs. We were, the town's gonna try to capture one meg, which is, you know, a million KW, and the schools will get four. Right now, the projects, they only approved four megs, so the school will get their four megs. We were set to go, they sold the billing, so now they're trying to do a new contract. But I think we're still gonna get that four megs of power.
But the four meg isn't enough for the whole town, it's just not for the schools.
Yeah, yeah, right, yeah. Because, you know, they, they only give you so many, so much power, I mean, especially when you're taking the credit from somewhere else. I mean, I love some, but, you know, we're trying to, I'm working with somebody else right now, they're looking at another net meeting project on the town side, maybe up to a meg, and maybe use that, use that energy money and maybe use it for the police department and the library to try to, try to...
Because they know, because they approached me, the company, NRG...
Yeah, yeah.
Is, is building tons of these things all over the place, and they're actually selling them now to residential.
Right, yeah.
So, I bought a little piece of a solar farm, basically. But you lock in your, you know, for 20 years, you're locking your utility rate.
It's just a long process by the time you go up for design, and then you try to, you know, try to get the utilities to approve it, permitting stages, where it goes, and it's just, you know, like I said, the, you know, this one there for the school department, it's been almost four years now.
Just to try and get it off the ground, yeah, yeah.
It just takes a long time, you know, but it's worth a lot of money. It's, payback's almost $250,000 a year for 20 years, so nice investment. And then, other major project, you know, we did last year, we, we received $250,000 in, in green communities and utility funding, so we did all new LEDs at all the schools, and we did some LEDs at the library, and we updated all the refrigeration controls at the schools. That project's about 95% complete, and we should save above and beyond the $350,000 received in grant money, about $65,000 a year in energy costs, so it's a nice project. And we're going again this year, trying to get another grant, you know, from green communities. The biggest step we're finding with green communities is the time to do the grants. It's almost a full-time job. So, we're working myself, Bill Clark, Henry, Henry McLean, and Jay from the billing department, we're still, but it's just, it's very time-consuming. A lot of towns have a specialized department that just goes off for grant money, businesses, the paperwork is very time-consuming. But it's worth it, I mean, you can get $250,000.
Yeah.
Our work order system's going great, it's like, you know, three and a half years, we're up by 6,200 work orders. The bad thing is that we're about 225 work orders behind schedule right now, so it's that, since, everybody knows we're out there, so everyone senses, it's the good and bad about having a work order system. One time, and then I put, and I won't read them all, but, you know, for the one-time money, again, when I put my budget together, I was asking for, you know, a good amount of money for the budget, and these would be all the one-time money projects if I get that extra money. You know, I listed just a snapshot, work at the police department, the COA, town hall, schools, and fire stations. And that's pretty much, you know, we're just a real busy department, you know, so everyone knows we're out there, we try to do the best that we can, you know, with the staff that we have in-house. You know, we still do a lot of subcontract work, but we do go out and I do try to get the best price. So, that's pretty much the snapshot for a yearly report, actually, we can't, it was supposed to be a quarterly report, but we missed a couple of...
It's great. Any other questions on the pillar?
Oh, thanks, Bill.
Appreciate it.
Yep.
Okay. Thank you, Bill. See, item seven on the agenda is a conference on mosquito control budget and compliance certification policy with Caroline Cincella. Hey, Caroline.
Hi, good evening.
Caroline.
How are you?
Good, good, thank you.
So, tell us what this whole mosquito, I guess we kinda know what it is, but it's been around for a while, but...
So, I went to the meeting last week at the Wellpool Town Hall. This is a declaration of support or no support for the mosquito control funding for FY 2017. There's 25 towns that are part of the Norfolk County Mosquito Control District, and science has shown that a regional approach is best approach. David Larson, who's the director, had a presentation, actually, I was the only one who went to the presentation out of the 25 towns, I couldn't believe it, but it was a great presentation. The presentation included surveillance, source reduction, larvicide and adulticide. The cherry sheet, the FY 2017 cherry sheet, the town of Milton is slated to pay $80,369 for the mosquito control.
That's about three grand more than last year.
Yeah, 2.5 increase from last year's budget. So, they went over the report also of what they did for Milton, they give a report every year, and the requests for service, there was 586 requests that they called in for service for spraying. The culverts were cleared, drainage ditches were checked and hand cleaned, intensive hand clean and brushing. There's tire collection, so if you have tires in your property and you want to get rid of them, you can call them, which I didn't realize, and they'll pick them up. So, there was seven tires collected. In April, they do the spring aerial larvicide applications, they did 155.2 acres last year. The summer aerial larvicide applications. They do larval control, like briquet and granular applications by hand. They do rain basin treatments, briquettes by hand, they did 1,500 aid basins. And then they go around with their trucks on Thursday evenings, you can call in, there's a number you can call in, you'll, I don't know if you want to give me, if you want me to give you the number, but you'll see coming into the paper, you can go to their website, thenoforcountymosquito.org, and you can request to have your property sprayed. And also, you can request to the clerk's office if you don't want your property sprayed. So there's a handful of people in Milton, there's probably about 10 or 12 last year that requested not to be sprayed. And you put that request into the clerk's office in writing, and it, you have to do a request every year, if you want to request not to be sprayed.
Spray.
Yeah.
But if you call and ask them, do they come right onto your property and spray, or is it still just from the street?
They come from the street, yeah, they have trucks and they have ultra-low volume that they spray onto the properties.
Okay.
So.
I mean, for $80,000 a year and, you know, given the amount of insect-borne diseases that are around, it's certainly worthwhile.
Money well spent.
No question.
I'll move that we approve a declaration of support of mosquito control funding for FY 17, for the state reclamation of mosquito control board, and to authorize the town administrator to sign any related documents on the board's behalf.
I'll second that.
Motion made, second, any further discussion? Seeing that all's in favor.
Aye.
Aye.
unanimous.
Thank you so much.
Thanks, Caroline.
Thanks. Thank you.
Okay. Item eight on the agenda is a discussion and approval of travel expenses for an employee, and I think we have Chief Wells here, with the distinguished honor of being invited to go to Israel by the Anti-Defamation League, and it's a counterterrorism seminar. So Richie, if you want to come up?
How you doing?
Good evening.
Good evening, chief.
You should get extra money for cold nights, they should have like a cold weather stipend for the selectmen.
Yeah, I think so. Especially since we're all sick. I was going to say, so why don't you tell us a little bit about this? As you know, and part of the reason is because this is a trip that's paid for by another agency, it has implications for, what do you call it, ethics and.
When we call it implications, it has guidelines.
Yes.
Guidelines, right, to report to the Ethics Commission.
So I guess in order to grant it, it has to be of a benefit to the town, basically. So, yeah, just talk a little bit, I guess, about what the program is and how it benefits the town of Milton or.
So the, let me start locally, I mean, this community, as Ms. Conlon saw last night by attending the MLK celebration, is that we've had a long history with the Anti-Defamation League, No Place for Hate Committee, their work through the Milton to Faith clergy, the schools, the police department, in so many ways. I don't, I personally, I've been to so many events and training sponsored by the Anti-Defamation League. They are clearly one of the leaders in training in, really in the area of hate and anti-Semitism today and terrorism and extreme, as we see, you know, some extremist religious factions in the world today. This is not something I, I knew about this a few years ago, I had an opportunity and I passed on it, and this one came very quickly. There are actually 15 of us from Massachusetts, it's a training mission for senior law enforcement executives. There are two sitting district attorneys, the special agent in charge of the FBI, the ATF, homemade security, five Massachusetts chiefs, and the colonel of the state police, as well as two religious representatives in this mission. It's very, as you notice, I didn't give you the, one of the things that asked for was the itinerary of each day, which is not given to us because of the security nature of the world. I will say to you that I'm very honored and humbled to be chosen, but it's quite a thing that you're going to travel to the epicenter of where world began, as far as from a religious point of view. It's very much a certain area of the world right now, there's a lot of, and the security for this trip was really extraordinary, but having an understanding, having worked with some of the Israeli trainers that have come here to teach law enforcement in the metro of Boston here in the past, I have a good insight in how they view things. Israel is very proactive. You know, I thought about this a little bit, you know, what could I offer to this? You know, what could I bring? I was very honored last night when I sat and watched four high school kids who were being interviewed about, just about social justice and racism and extremes in their town, and how, when they talked about two factions that they deal with daily that see through it in this town, they specifically mentioned teachers and police officers. And I think perhaps they do a good job of that. 15 years ago, I sat in this very room, and with Mr. Cronin, when Mrs. Blut walked in and said that a second plane had hit the World Trade Tower. And I can't remember who else was in there, I know that when there was a short period of time, we were all downstairs. I remember thinking that day, you know, this is kind of surreal and how America kind of changed. And it put challenges on our country, it put challenges on the world for law enforcement. It just kind of made us more in tune with the things that we did, not just the big things, but all the little things mattered. And I think that in our community, probably the thing that I'm most proud of is that even in big things like that, and the role that the officers here played, most people don't even know, I've only told the story once, which was when I was sworn in, the role that they played in 9/11 and what they provided to New York City for two months after that happened, was pretty extraordinary. And that's kind of a mindset that they have each and every day, whether they're in the schools, whether they're detectives when they're out on patrol, when they're investigating these things, they're not perfect, but that's how they are. And I think the same was applicable when the Marathon bombing happened three years ago. Officers who came to patrol that day at 3:30, and including myself, in a short period of time, we're standing in downtown Boston there for eight days. And I always remember at one point of that night, coming in contact with Lieutenant Foley, who was on Boles, at the end of Boles Street on a checkpoint, and thinking to himself how surreal it was and how good terrorism or something that touches. So this is really a pretty extraordinary trip, and I really want to thank Chief Berkowitz from Kent, who was the ADL rep from the Mass Chiefs, who was the one who recommended me for this. And, well, it is a very long and extensive, they're 10-hour days, and they say it's very travel, we traveled from Tel Aviv all the way up north to the Syrian border over the eight days, they're 10-hour days minimum, but I'm really being prepared very well by our rabbi, who lived in Israel for two years, he's already given me all this homework, and I've got about five books to read. Most people don't know the Rabbi Benjamin lived there for two years.
Is it hands-on experience, or how did the?
Oh, yeah, you travel a great deal with the Israeli security, National Police and Security Forces, and you are allowed to see every aspect from how they handle people coming in at Tel Aviv Airport to Jerusalem, where you have the, you know, the four corners, they call the Arabs, Jews, and the Christians, all the way up to Galilee, the north, the West Bank. We will spend a day with the Palestinians, where the Palestinians will present their side, you know, how they view this living in the world to us, so. In that aspect, you know, I always laugh, when I first, going back to Mr. Cronin, I was first interviewed to come here, he said, you know, what do you want to do? And I said, well, I said, I'd really be happy if I could get to work in East Milton one day. And I've really had some great opportunities to go away beyond that in that aspect. I'm very fortunate and I'm privileged to really represent this community going so far across the world on this trip, so.
Sounds like a great opportunity. It really does. I wanted to know if, obviously you're going to learn an awful lot, and you guys will be trained at certain levels, how you would implement that when you did come back? You know, Jack Richmond typically does some of your training, right?
Right.
Is that something that you see being really advantageous, since we do border the city of Boston, and how, what type of relationship will that bring Milton?
So, you're right, so if you, you know, I've had the unique opportunity to go on Northern Ireland several years ago, which was a very uncertain part of the world, and so you like to take their best practices and bring it back here. One of the people that is going, they didn't mention the superintendent, Randy Halsted from Boston PD is representing them, Commissioner Revenus has been, Commissioner Davis, Commissioner Bratton from New York have been on this junket. So you want to, you're right, come back and see how they do things. One of the things that I do understand is they accept it, and very much how, and I've had the privilege to be at NYPD many times, they accept this as a way of life, even in the, even in the, and I bring this with me, in the, you know, we all go places and see maps, so this was given to me by the rabbi. This is like a tourist map, but on the final page, it shows when you're in an area, where you're in an area where you can be struck by a rocket attack, by, fired by Hezbollah, you know, what the, what the strike songs are. We just don't, but they're very proactive in that nature, so I'm anxious to bring that back, as you know, I've been, and especially Amberi, and that I've been very proactive in regional aspects, and what we can do regionally, and very outspoken, and we as a police department have been really in the forefront of that, and that Sergeant Richmond emerged from that, has become a real leader and active shooter in violence, and now is very upfront on Governor Baker's, you know, radar screen. So it'll be good in that aspect to come back and share what they do. I've already told the temples asked me to come speak, I told them I would gladly come and speak, and I, I'll be very honored to share whatever, you know, I'll, I'm on Twitter, I'll tweet things daily as we get them and try to send things back, and I did tell Pat that I'd try to email the Times like live a couple times from there, just to send that to you. But I do think that anything you can go that's outside of your norm, and you always gain from it, so in that aspect, I think we'll gain a great deal from. Actually, Sergeant Richmond wishes he was going with me. He was, he was the second person I told, and he was like, most don't know he is of Jewish faith, so he follows this very closely, he knows many people, he actually, on his SWAT uniform, wears an Israeli patch on his uniform, so he was, he was wishing he.
Maybe in a future year, he can make that.
Well, I told him that, I said, study. But you're right, and he may, and I just say, the ADL has been really very good, especially in Massachusetts with us in this, and really proactive, and so, and that I think it'll be, in the long run, will be very good.
Certainly is a once-in-a-lifetime opportunity.
It is that.
It is, and it'll be good for.
And I can see how it could be, you know, I don't think we're a huge target for terrorism. We certainly have, you know.
Yeah.
There could be anything going on at a school at any given point in time, and there's a lot of crossover between.
And that's one of the things, they do extraordinary work on the protection of their school infrastructure, and you've heard me talk a lot, you know, we may not have a social plaza, but we're creeping up on 12,000 students a day in this, we're a school of, a town that's becoming known for our education. And I think that the focus that we give, I mean, you only had to watch, there were four bombs yesterday, four different schools, there were several yesterday. We had to send mutually to Weymouth on Friday, and we've had our own share of threats and incidents here that we've dealt with, and those are the things that I'll be glad, you know, to share and talk about and listen to how they deal with it there. So you're correct, and as I said, going back to, if you ever told me, even at post 9/11, having had the opportunity to be in New York City, to ever think that, you know, on a Saturday afternoon, or a Monday afternoon on the Boston Marathon, you'd go from watching it on TV to being standing downtown Boston for the next eight days, and then how it all came to fruition in water towns at the end, is, we live in a different world today, we just really do, and whether it's our kids in our schools, the people who work in this building, the people who go to our religious institutions here, I think it's incumbent us to do whatever we can, and so in that aspect, I'm very glad to bring back whatever we can from there.
That's great.
Well, I agree, chief, it's a good thing for Milton, and through, for your department, through you, to go to this training program and learn everything that you'll be learning and bring it, and bring it back to your department. You've submitted to us the disclosure of potential appearance of a conflict, I have filled out more than my share of these, being on this board, so I know what it is to go through this. We're not aware of anything that the, that the ADL is involved in that would present any conflict?
No.
You're not aware of anything?
No, not at all.
I'm not.
No. They're pretty much a think tank, an educational tank, that's their primary mission, is to.
And what we need to make a determination on is the appointing authority, is that this will serve a legitimate public purpose, and that any, the public purpose outweighs any other benefits. So I'll move that we approve the acceptance of travel and related expenses by Chief Richard Wells to attend a counterterrorism seminar in Israel being held by the Anti-Defamation League of Massachusetts from January 24th through February 2nd, 2016, finding that it will serve a legitimate public purpose, and that the public purpose outweighs any special non-related benefit.
I'll second that.
Motion made, second, any further discussion? Seeing that all's in favor.
Aye.
Aye.
Have a good trip.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks.
That's all I care about.
Yeah, safe trip, yes.
We'll be, we'll be looking for a report too when you get back.
I'll gladly.
Not just, not just the temple, we want you to come and give us a report.
I expect that, you know, there'll be a lot of questions, and I, this is definitely, there'll be, like I said, the best practices you'd want to bring back.
Yeah.
I talked to the superintendent today about it, she's, same thing, very curious, just based on just the things that happen in her, in her radar every day.
I think it's great, I mean, you're going with such a great crowd of people that have a lot of, a wealth of experience, and I think it's going to help Milton a lot.
And we're all going for the same reason, we're the best practices we want.
That's right.
Yeah. Thank you.
Okay, item nine is the Quincy Economic Target Area Grant, which is billed one of, wait a couple of minutes, if you want.
Yes, she has moved on to item.
Okay. Doesn't make any sense to switch over to, can I take a longer bit? Just take a little pause while we wait for Emily to find Bill Clark, so we can talk about the next item on the agenda.
Yes.
All right, we had to talk about.
A support letter for the Quincy Regional Collaborative Economic Target Area. Milton's one of 11 communities that, in this consortium, and basically, there's a, I gave you our report, I gave you the executive summary, I also gave you some of the draft action items from the economic target area, which should be that last pull-out page, that The whole idea here is we're just working with our neighboring towns, looking at economic The only match from the town is my time to the committee. The request is a letter of support from the selectmen to the state. It's a part two to a grant that we got last year. This year will be, there'll be a website for the economic target area going online. Could go on now, but it'll probably be February 1st. Another rollout of it will be at a function that will, that the Quincy Chamber is going to have, February 3rd, where they have Governor Charlie Baker making a statement about the economic target area and the report itself, and moving on to the part two. So I'm here just requesting a letter of support, which I wrote a draft, and I know you've seen it.
Bill, what, I see you have a list of draft action items. What do you see being a positive impact towards Milton in the future in some of the meetings that you have attended?
I think it's, I think one of the stronger points is that we're sitting at the table with our neighboring communities, so that when there's regionalization to take, regionalism to take place, we're there. We already do this with housing, through the home program. Quincy, Weymouth, Braintree, Holbrook are all part of that same consortium. We work with the Intercor Group and the South Shore Group for the regional, subregional groups with MAPC. This is just another part, this is something that we have not historically gone after, some of the economic development issues. It's a forum that is give and take in this trading that goes on. Curry is a big player in the economic target area. They have the school in Milton, they've got a school in Quincy, they've got a school in Plymouth. They're one of the largest employers in the region. This is just, are there different businesses that are looking for homes? A lot of times, they're looking through the economic target area. If they don't fit here, we can give them to somebody else, they find something, they can't fit, they can come here. There's just the conversation going on.
I think having that regional discussion is very positive. I think that all towns are going to start having to go that direction.
Right.
In the near future, and, you know, so I think it's great, and hopefully that we can, we can pull something out of it, you know, in terms of resources in the future with the collaboration.
That's.
I agree.
Our desire.
Yeah. Okay, I'll make a motion to sign and submit of support for the Regional Economic Development Organization Grant Program.
Second.
Motion made, second, any further discussion? Seeing that all's in favor.
Aye.
Aye.
Unanimous. Thanks, Bill.
Thank you.
Back to Congress.
Okay, next item on the agenda is a review of our financial policies, which were adopted, I think, back in 2007, if I'm not mistaken, and we really haven't revisited much since then. So it's the first kind of pass-through at them. I don't know how you want to do this, if you want to just kind of go down one by one and just give your thoughts on, I mean, the policy statements, so they're meant to be general, I think most of them are still applicable. Kind of, as I read through some of the narrative before you. Kind of, as I read through some of the narrative before you get to the policy statements, it's getting kind of dated, but...
Yeah, I think we could update these, some of this, you know, in number two, instead of talking about FYI '06 and '07...
Yeah.
We can update this a little bit, make it a little more current.
I agree.
Or maybe make it more general, so that it doesn't refer to a specific year, but we just refer to recent practices.
And also, anything that might have evolved since then. It's new.
Right. The only other thing that came to mind is, is I looked at number two, which is the multi-year budgets and forecasts, and then it gets down to the budget and forecast statement. And we obviously are doing multi-year budgeting now or forecasting, so, so we are at least complying with our policy now. But as I read through it, it became evident that, I'm not sure our budget forms, in the way this wants to lay out, two years of level service budgets plus an impact statement on level dollar budgets. I'm not sure that our budget forms really lend itself tremendously to that. There's nothing wrong with the policy. I just think maybe we should, at some point, have a, and I know we did look at those forms once before, not too long ago.
So, look to update those forms?
We did, we just recently revised the forms...
Yeah.
And we do have narrative pages where you're supposed to...
Right.
...write about the impact...
Another one thing, we tend not to make a big deal when the department heads don't put narratives in, and we really should. We really should bounce them back when they don't and make it really clear that, and for a while, we weren't even requesting level, level service budgets. We were just, you know, we were just saying, you know, we can't do level service, we want level dollar, a level dollar with, you know, covering pay raises or...
Mm-hmm.
But we hadn't been really looking at that whole level service picture. I mean, I think we did this time with our, with our forecast. And, and I think the schools have always submitted what they consider a level service budget. On the town side, we don't as much.
Well, number three, Tom, I think we should get, this is capital appropriations and debt service, and I think you as our capital committee representative might want to...
Yeah.
...take the first stab at revising that one or consulting with your committee on that?
Yeah, and, yeah, I have, because, I mean, you know, right now, we're doing different things. I mean, this talks about a 5%, you know, 5% of the operating budget should go towards debt service, and that includes debt exclusion, which I'm not really sure that, I mean, debt exclusion comes and goes, and when you need that big capital projects, it's there. I'm not sure it makes a lot of sense to marry those two together. And clearly, what we've been doing now in the capital committee is saying, well, let's make sure we at least maintain 1.9% of the tax levy as, as debt service, so that it doesn't go down. You know, we want to maintain that level. There's nothing significant about the 1.9% other than it was a mark in the sand at one point in time, and we say, okay, well, from there on, let's keep it at that level, so as the tax levy goes up, the amount of debt service goes up.
But that's the thing. That's not in the policy.
That's not in.
But that's the capital committee's practice.
So, maybe that should be something.
So, I think the committee could take a stab at revising this one.
Yeah, at revising this. I totally agree with that.
Bringing it back to us for, even the narrative before, you know, refers to, we're going to be undertaking the library renovation project. So, some of this just needs to be updated because it's 10 years...
Right.
...down the road.
Exactly. Yeah, the other thing is, I've taken up with the, I've taken up with the capital committee a, looking at free cash and one-time cash, to maybe have the capital committee come up with a policy statement on that if there is free cash, either a certain percentage of free cash should be dedicated towards capital projects. You know, in addition, you know, 1.9, regardless of where it comes from, 1.9% of the tax levies there. But over and above that, in those years, you have $2 million of free cash, you know, should 25% or some number, some percentage...
Be allocated.
...be allocated to capital projects. But more so than that, I, and other towns have, the Endover has it, they have a free cash policy, where they'll allow a little bit to go to the operating budget. And, and, you know, capital projects and, you know, they kind of spell out, you know, what you should and shouldn't do with...
But that goes to the fourth one, reserve levels, because I think that's really, the only, free cash isn't mentioned by name, but I think that's the only place in these 15 policies where there's really any...
Right.
...somewhat relevant issue for free cash.
And that's another one that we've had a policy, and I've written policy lately, of funding, not all the time out of the operating budget, you know, because a lot of times it'll come out of free cash, but, but there really should be an effort to say, hey, so much of the operating budget should just go to our rainy day fund, you know, or, and, you know, the state does it when it can. You know, clearly, if you're taking money out, you don't want to put money if it takes it out, but...
Well, we, so I don't think there's any of these that refers, I think four is really the only one that...
It is, yes.
...that implicates either free cash or any of the stabilization funds.
Yes.
So, that one probably needs to be updated to, you know, we've had one, an inquiry from one resident about free cash in particular.
Yep.
I think we could spell it out a little bit more in number four.
Yes, agree. Yep. So, I can take a look at some of the other towns, like, I know the Endover does have a free cash policy. There's probably other towns that do as well. Maybe try and visit those and see if they make sense for Milton. Energy policy, it talks about a task force. Will provide the board of selectmen recommend it. Do we have such a thing anymore? I know we did have certain energy committees in the past, but we had a solar...
No.
...committee for a while. We had the wind turbine committee, but, but I don't know that we really have. And clearly, energy probably outside of salary and wages, energy is probably the next big ticket item on, on our budgets.
I think it makes sense, I think, when you're looking at ways that you can, you know, where the budget can see impact with energy or solar or something.
Right, right. And we've been doing a lot of things in the...
Right, and it's been, it's, well, Bill just told us about some of the things that are happening with the schools, which is great.
Right.
And the town.
I don't think it's...
But as we go along, it's, you know, as the budget gets tighter, these are great opportunities.
Yeah, yeah. And also, as the, as the low-hanging fruit gets picked...
Right.
...you know, the, the more esoteric parts of it, you know, might lend itself to a good knowledgeable committee that...
Sure.
...that understands where that can be. So, it might be something we look to.
We could tweak that and look to maybe form that.
We used to have an alt-energy committee.
Yes.
I just don't know if it's been running, or if we have any members on it.
Yep.
I think some of the later ones, like revolving funds, user fees, regionalizations, is a lot of these, I think, are still very relevant today, then probably don't need to be tweaked very much at all.
Yeah, I agree. I didn't have many comments after that. Policy and user fees, I think, I think is a good policy. I don't know how often, we should make it, at least for our department heads, you know, anybody that charges fees should review them, well, probably should review them annually to make sure they're covering costs, but periodically should review them with other cities and towns to make sure that they keep in pace with the market, too.
That's a good point. I know that, I'm sure the Parks Commission does that with light fees and things like that. So, you know, and a lot of times, a lot of towns generally look at each other on those, so...
Sure, yeah.
It makes a lot of sense.
Yeah. Some of what the market will be, but...
Yeah.
And, yeah, I didn't see any, any other problems as I looked through them.
Do we have this in a Word document? I know we have it in a PDF, but do we have a Word version?
Yes, we do.
Could we circulate the Word version? Would it make sense then for us to split some of these up and...
Sure.
...take a stab at revising them and bring them back for a further discussion?
Sounds good.
Tom, I think capital is probably something that you should...
Yeah, I'll look at capital.
Handle.
And again, it's, it's not so much the policies, but some of the, some of the narrative leading up to the policies, I think, that needs to be...
They don't need to be.
Yeah.
But the 1.9% reference that you mentioned is not in the policy, so...
Right, right.
So, we've talked before about maybe that should be something that we consider, should that be a policy going forward, rather than just a practice at the capital committee?
Right, I agree. Should be. Any other ones that you want to? I mean, I'll look at the capital one. I have no problem with that. Any other ones you, Katie, you think?
I can look through the user fees if you'd like.
Okay.
And explore the energy policy as well.
Yeah, I think that's a good one. You know, and again, it may not, there may be nothing required with the policy, other than maybe taking some operational changes.
Yeah, some operation, the policy might be fine, right, but the, the actual narrative leading up to it might be what we want to look at.
If you want to split them up, I'm happy to take multi-year budget forecasts or...
Okay.
I mean, reserves, maybe, Tom, you're going to do that one?
Yeah.
Because that kind of goes along with capital, too.
Take reserves. Anything else? Nope.
No?
Make a note to send the Word document.
Okay. Item, I get to it. 11 on the agenda is a discussion of the Town Administrator Search Committee. Started talking about this last time. David, I saw your write-up in, in terms of the qualifications, and I had, I had seven or eight of them, and they were almost identical to yours. Those were a little more written out than mine, but good communication skills, you know, written verbal knowledge of municipal finance, knowledge of municipal budgeting techniques, you know, certainly the, the ability to do strategic planning, I mean, all those, all those made sense.
Yeah, that's good. I think, you know, another one, the initiative and the risk-taking action, meaning, kind of looking at vision, developing new ideas and improving, improving service delivery in citizen access, you know? So, kind of the ability to be able to work not only within the government structure, but also outside and in the community with stakeholders.
Right, I agree.
Which I think is, is a really big deal.
On mine, I also had that, you know, perhaps we should try and look for somebody that, I mean, you do want somebody with public sector experience, but if they have both, you know, some non-public sector experience as well, it...
It's always helpful.
Yeah.
Yeah, and, and, you know, people who can create the public-private partnerships to enhance operational...
Right.
...opportunities. That's, that's great. I think, you know, what we're looking for, and not to label it by any stretch of the imagination, is a current town manager or strong town manager who sees this as a great opportunity, or someone with the ability or equivalent ability from, whether it be the state level or even the private sector, who has spent time in the public sector.
Yep.
You know, I think so. You know, the variations can change, but someone who is a chief officer or has been...
Yep.
Because this is, and should be, the way we articulated in the job description, a coveted position, now that it's going to the strong former government, and one that really has the opportunity to be that strong leader and to hopefully find ways to make town government more efficient and successful while working with the community. And I think that, you know, when you, when you bring all of those aspects together, you're going to have someone who will be, in fact, the CEO of the town and who a board can work with. And I think that the eyes will be on this, because there was some changeover fairly quick with a couple of times here in Milton, and I've spoken to other town administrators throughout the Commonwealth. And I think that the hope would be that we would find, would, would at least convey that this is a position where, you know, and if we make it attractive enough, that this person won't have to look over their shoulder and know that they'll have the board's support and the support from the community...
Yep.
...to be able to build a team and to have a strong future here in the town.
Absolutely, because it's, it's not a short-range project.
No.
Especially in this town, it's, it's a long-range project.
It's a long-range project, yeah.
The only other thing I had in my end was, and you probably touched on it a little bit, was just consensus-building skills.
Absolutely.
Especially in this town, we've been dealing with so many different elected boards and everything else that...
No doubt.
...the ability to be able to pull all those boards together and, you know, and work cooperatively is, is the key to...
And we're fortunate to have Amy with us here on, in the process, you know? No one knows the job better than her.
I had also thought about, I don't know if we want to try and throw out people's names now or do it privately, because I, I haven't asked any of these people. I have four or five names here of, think people I think...
I think if you haven't asked people, it's best not to say.
Yeah, okay.
The thing that, speaking of the committee, I do, I have, we talked about each of us appointing two people...
Yes.
And then having a seventh person...
Correct.
...possibly someone who's a town administrator somewhere else. I don't know that we, we talked about it. I don't know if we agreed on that. Is that...
I have no problem with that.
Yeah.
Is that...
I thought we agreed, but that's...
Okay.
That was my intention.
All right, that's fine.
Standing.
Yeah, I think that would make sense. We want to make sure that this is a committee that's reflective of the town and...
Yes.
Covers enough different interests in the town and different backgrounds and experience. Obviously, experience on a selection committee or with management is a, is a good qualification to have, but I think we also want to be sure that we have a committee that's...
Sure.
I think we did the last time, so it's really just a matter of following through on that as well. David, I liked your qualifications list. I thought they, I thought it was good, and the ones that you've added, Tom. So, it's, maybe this is something that we would attach to the charge to the committee. I think we still have to work on the charge, because the charge, the draft from the last time, it's more of a, it was more of a timeline, I think, than an actual charge, but it's really to look at these qualifications.
Right, we've got to work on the charge, the job descriptions.
Yeah, exactly. I think we just need to spell it out a little more.
I think that the more information we give that screening committee and kind of our kind of conceptual idea of what we're looking for from them, I think the better off we'll be. I think that, yes, I agree, that kind of timeline will be very helpful. I think that spelling it all out for them and giving them kind of, you know, a nice scope will be very helpful.
Now, in terms of the seventh member, we talked about possibly someone who might have some experience as a town administrator in another town. I don't know if anyone's come up with any further thoughts on that. Maybe that's something we want to give a little more thought to. Last time, we had, we were fortunate enough, someone who lived in Milton who had that experience.
Right.
I don't know if we'll get that same type of background.
I have spoken to and received, you know, a favorable comment with Mike Gillette, who's the current town administrator in the town of Westwood, and he's been there for 28 years. He's been involved in the MMA.
And it's a similar town, similar...
Very similar. He said he would be very willing to work with the screening committee, though...
He doesn't want to be a member.
Wouldn't want to be a member, especially in interviewing, because a lot of the people he deals with on a regular basis, and he doesn't want to, but he would, he would be very interested in helping do that if that's someone that, so there's, there's an option. Okay, so I'll put that out there as one option. And he, he seems to think very highly of the town of Milton. I know he had a relationship with Mr. Cronin dating back, because they've been in the business for a long time. So, he's aware of some of our current issues and, you know, future opportunities.
So, in terms of our process, it sounds like maybe we need another meeting or two before we name a committee. I, I know we've all been thinking about different people. I've got one person who is a definite, but there's another second person I, I still would need to pin down. So, I, I'm not ready to put names forward at this point, but in terms of timing, we're into the second week in January. with this qualifications list, revise the charge a little bit to reference these qualifications or attach them, and then come up with a newspaper and ad, and wherever else, it'll be the town administrator, I'm sure has a list of publications that you use for any kind of positions like this, and then get the committee in place. So, do we have, I think we should come up with a sense of timing, whether it's early February, early to mid-February, when we have the committee officially appointed, and they have the charge, and we're ready to begin the advertising process.
Yeah, I think, you know, next week, maybe early, if you want to give people time, but I mean, I'm ready with mine, but if maybe two weeks from now, I think we go into town meeting, don't we? At that point, or is that February?
The 26th and the 2nd, yeah.
Okay, so, maybe, maybe the second, that we could look to a point.
When we have a meeting with, that's the 27th, okay, yeah. So, yeah, maybe the 26th.
Okay.
Well, that's the next Tuesday.
Yes.
Or the 2nd, you know.
Or the February 2nd, is your meeting after next Tuesday?
Either one's fine with me.
Yeah, I think either one of those, if we can get the committee, if, and are we talking about having the committee appointed, having the charge finished, and having possibly the advertisement drafted?
Yeah, well, at least, at least the charge and the, and the committee in place, yeah.
Yeah, I would say the charge and the committee in place, and then set it, and set a timeline.
Yeah, because the committee can't do anything until they start getting, until we advertise, we start getting opportunities. So, I think that, I think the ad is important to try to move that along quickly, too.
I think internally, though, we should look at dates for, and try to meet dates and be as transparent as possible on that, so that we know that we can, you know, have, have a, have a certain date where we have three or four solid candidates that we're going to interview.
Yeah, yeah.
Now, this was a pretty aggressive timeline in the 2012, 2013 form, and it says no more than, not more than 30 days following the date of the committee's first meeting, the committee shall submit to the board the names of not less than three, no more than five candidates. I think that's, how did that work, Tom? Do either of you recall?
We got plenty of resumes, I remember that. So, that wasn't an issue.
But did the process play out that quickly? That just seems aggressive to me.
Pretty close.
Yeah, no, it was pretty close.
But, you know, on the other hand, we're, you know, we were a little bit up against the gun, just because we were, you know, short-staffed and, you know, without a town administrator. So, you know, that, there was a little more sense of urgency to that than it may necessarily have to be to this.
I mean, this committee, didn't the screening committee go through a round of interviews before?
Yes, yes.
So, they were able to do that within a month, narrow the list down and get all of the interviews done, okay?
That's quick.
It is, and the fortunate thing for us is, even though the town administrator's last day technically would be June 30th, she's indicated she'd be a little bit flexible, willing to stay on if need be, a little bit longer. Hopefully, we won't have to call upon her to...
Personally, I mean, I think I'd, I'd like to see this, you know, wrapped up by May 1st, you know, a solid...
I would say yes.
Two months prior, you know, but I'd want to give it an opportunity, I think it's, I think it's such an important item, I want to give it an opportunity for us to use some of our connections and get the word out that this is going to be a supported position, and that it's going to be one that, you know, this new CEO will get an opportunity to kind of craft some of their team and, and work with a board that's going to be supportive of them.
I agree with that.
We want to be able to attract the best, and I think that we will be able to.
The other thing we have to have some kind of discussion about, too, is salary range. I don't really think salary range is going to be, you know, if we think it's going to be in the same range that our town administrator is now, or more expensive, or...
I think that that's, I think it's going to be, I think we should have a little wiggle room based upon the person's qualifications.
Yeah, exactly. Exactly, I mean, if you're striving for the best, then you've got to have the ability to, right, well, pay for them, or... Okay, anything else? So, we'll plan on, what are we planning, on February 2nd? Sounds good. By that time, I will talk to, I'm going to do that, I mean, I've got five, four or five potentials. We'll just go through the list and say, I don't know, how do I, how do I say, do you want to do it, and then say, oh, changed my mind? Or maybe just kind of rank them, and go down the list that way, as soon as I get the two? I don't know.
I don't know. I'll have to hear it, Tom.
Why don't we have a conversation?
I'll have to think about that one. Okay, item 12 on the agenda is town administrator report.
I don't have a report this evening.
Okay, item 13 is the chair's report, and I don't have a report at this time either. 14, members' report?
I don't have anything to report right now.
I went last week to the, on a Thursday night at 6:00 in the evening, over to Massport, to the Logan Airport Community Advisory Committee meeting. It was quite, it was quite interesting, it went for about three hours, and I had some follow-up discussions with the CAC rep and the chair of the Airplane Noise Committee this weekend, so I'd like to see if we can put, I don't know what the agenda looks like for the 26th, but if we have room on the agenda, I think we should put the CAC report on for the 26th, so we can give a report on that meeting and some follow-up items. And the airplane committee's meeting Thursday, so they may have some items to report as well.
Okay. So, that covers 16, two future agenda items. Any other future agenda items? Oh, citizen speak responses, I think we already responded to citizen speak, so...
Yes.
Anything else on the agenda for future agenda?
Future agenda items, at your next meeting on the 26th, you have a public hearing on the sign for Navarro.
Okay.
So, that's on the 26th, next Tuesday.
Okay. At some point in time, is the gas station sign coming before us, or...
It should come back before you, yes. I think they're still doing the paperwork, Mr. Chairman.
Okay. All right, so I will propose a motion to enter into executive session to discuss strategy with respect to non-union personnel, and to discuss collective bargaining strategy with respect to union and non-union personnel, believing that having such discussion in open session would have a detrimental effect on the negotiating position of the board, and return to open session for the purpose of adjournment.
So moved.
Ms. Carlin?
Yes.
Mr. Burns?
Yes.
Mr. Hurley, yes.